Good evening colleagues and citizens of the city of Portsmouth. I want to call the order our public work session. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus effective of Order 51 on March 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the ninth day of March 2021 without a quorum present in the City Council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each City Council member is participating from their home or other remote location and I am in the City Council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
If you all could just bear with us a minute. Minor technical difficulty.
Sorry about that council member. Um, Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burr?
Present.
Mr. Moody? Mr. Moody? I see him though. Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard is trying to...
Deborah, I'm here and I can barely hear you.
Okay, I'll turn my volume up. Mayor Glover?
No.
Now, can you hear me now? Councilman Moody, can you hear me?
Not well.
Okay.
Mr. Pace, would you proceed with your items please?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, good evening. In response to your request for a presentation on the casino, tonight Rush Street Gaming is here to provide you with such a presentation and to also engage in a question and answer session. Presenters include Delcino Miles, Rivers Casino Portsmouth Public Relations and Community Engagement Lead, President and CEO of the Miles Agency, Michael Tobin, Senior Vice President, Real Estate and Construction Rush Street Gaming LLC, Dr. Ramon Hart, Director of Community Relations, Rivers Casino, Justin Ballard, Business Development, SB Ballard Construction Company, and Mr. Stephen R. Romine, Attorney, Williams Mullen. Good evening Rush Street delegation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, everybody hear me okay? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, Madam Clerk, good evening everyone. I'm Delcino Miles, I'm President of the Miles Agency. We're a local PR firm, minority owned, been in business for 32 years. I was privileged to be the first hire by Rush Street to assist them with community engagement, to lead public relations. I'm just excited about this project. I've done quite a bit of work in Portsmouth over the years, beginning when you first started the Yomoja Festival on up to now that we're working with, we work with your planning department, with the update of your comp plan and the city park master planning. So it's an honor to continue to partner with you and work with you again. And it's a privilege to share this update about the journey that we're taking with the city of Portsmouth and this exciting opportunity to really position Portsmouth as a premier destination for some amazing gaming, dining, and entertainment for residents and visitors alike. And Rush Street has a stellar record of excellence and integrity. And so, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, we'd like to go through the presentation and certainly take your questions after that if that's okay. And so with me, you've heard the City Manager mention that we have Mike Tobin. He's our Senior Vice President of Real Estate and Construction. He's going to discuss the track record of success of Rush Street Gaming, how they have expertise in not only building but financing and operating casinos with excellence and integrity. And Dr. Ramon Hart is the Director of Community Relations and he's going to discuss the Rush Street Gaming culture, then the DNA of community engagement, and their commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also have Justin Ballard who's the Director of Business Development, SB Ballard. They were chosen because of their strong record of local construction and their commitment to supplier diversity. They are also teamed with Yates Construction and they are the general contractor who will build the facility. And then Steve Romine is the attorney from Williams Mullen and he will go over issues regarding the site plan and the entertainment district. So with that, we can go to the next slide and Mike Tobin will take it from here.
So, thank you very much. I want to second Delcino's comments about how excited we are about this project. We've been working on it for a couple of years now and really been very pleased with the response that we've had from everybody we've met in the community and the public officials that we've been working with, both staff and elected officials. Rush Street Gaming is a company that's been in existence for almost 25 years. It was founded by Neil Bloom who started in the real estate business about 50 years ago. Always privately held companies, but his focus has been on mixed-use development of real estate, including hotels, office buildings, retail, residential properties. It's based in Chicago and privately held. Next slide please. So Rush Street was founded to take a path into the gaming industry. It's an exciting and challenging industry as we've found, but what we've done which is a little bit different than some other gaming companies you may be familiar with, is we focused on regional casinos where we have typically been the first casino to open in new areas where casino gaming has been allowed and that's the same approach that we're taking in Portsmouth. We hope to be the first casino that opens as a permanent land-based casino in the state of Virginia. We have four casinos that we own and operate now. We've developed six and our commitment to each of our casinos is to be a strong community participant. Next slide please. Because of the fact that we are privately held and owned by the same people who founded the companies, we have a longstanding track record of working with a close group of, I'll call them trusted partners in that they trust us, we trust them. We have relationships with some of the major financial institutions in the country and have already been talking with them about how to move forward as quickly as possible with this project. We have developed, or I should say Neil and his various partners in the companies over the years have developed over $60 billion worth of projects. We've financed $6.6 billion in debt over recent years and are very proud of the fact that we've prevailed even in, I was going to say the worst of times, but I have to tell you, we didn't expect the pandemic which may be truly the worst of times we've been through, but we have always managed to complete our project successfully on time, on budget. And even after the Great Recession, we actually opened our highest grossing casino which is Rivers in Displanes, Illinois, right after the Great Recession. Next slide please. The next few slides are photographs of the casinos that we're operating now. We started with the Schenectady photograph because the size and program is most similar to Portsmouth, but each of our projects, as I said, are tailored to the communities in which they're built. Schenectady is on a river, it has a hotel and event center as well as the casino and that's very similar to the program that we've proposed for Portsmouth which will also have a hotel, an event center, and the casino and associated restaurants and entertainment venues. Next slide. Rivers in Philadelphia is a larger property than Schenectady, but because of the size of the site does not have a hotel, but it's located on the river and we take advantage of the river as a location for outdoor events, just as we're planning here in Portsmouth to use the lake that we'll be building as part of the project for outdoor events as well. Next slide. Our Pittsburgh Casino, also on the river, and I should add by the way, Rivers Casino is named not because they happen to be on rivers, although three of our four casinos are on rivers, but it's a name that we thought really related nicely to the communities in which we're locating. This slide we've shown in particular because you can see the amphitheater that we created for outdoor events along the river and the casino really focuses from the interior with large windows looking out on the river. So it's a really very pleasant space for people for gaming. We're also developing a hotel on this property. We started construction last year, had to stop because of the pandemic, but we are looking forward to resuming construction as soon as possible in Pittsburgh. Next slide. This is Rivers in Displanes, I mentioned a couple minutes ago. This is our highest grossing casino. It's also the highest grossing casino in the state of Illinois and because of that, we're expanding this. We literally started construction last week on an expansion that will add an event center, it will enlarge the gaming, it will add additional food and beverage outlets for the casino and will position us to take advantage of what we hope will be a resurging economy as we get the pandemic under control in this country. Next slide.
Thanks, Mike. And as you can see that Rush Street Gaming has a great track record of success and we plan to bring all that wealth of experience to Portsmouth. There's no learning curve when it comes to building, operating casinos and you've chosen a seasoned industry leader and so, and a well-respected leader with a stellar reputation. I'd like to just show this slide as a recap of how we got here and where we are. In 2018, the Virginia Legislature approved the historical horse racing, that's the Rosies that you're familiar with. Then in April 2020, the Governor, he signed, he signed the law authoring casinos in the five cities, including Portsmouth, so Norfolk, Richmond, Danville, and Bristol included. And then in May 2020, Rush Street Gaming affiliate, the Portsmouth Gaming Holdings, was selected. You chose us as the preferred gaming operator for the city and we thank you and that was the beginning of a wonderful and we know long-term partnership. And then in July 2020, the Virginia Lottery Board pre-certified Rush Street Gaming for operations in Virginia. And then in November, the voters in Portsmouth overwhelmingly supported the referendum, 66.7% to say yes and welcomed Rush Street Gaming to begin this illustrious relationship and become one of your newest neighbors and corporate residents in the city. And then we're hopefully, all of this is certainly pending approvals from the lottery that we can, once we get those approvals, then hopefully in the fall then we can commence construction. And then it takes about two years to build and so we are planning, anticipating the delivery and grand opening of the facility late '22, early '23. Next slide please. And Dr. Ramon Hart, he will, again, he is the Director of Community Relations for Rush Street Gaming and he's going to share the culture and commitment of diversity and inclusion as well as the, what's in their DNA of giving back to the community. Ramon?
Thank you, Delcino. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Ramon Hart and in a few weeks, I'll be celebrating seven years of being a member of the Rush Street Gaming family. A major part of my role is to oversee diversity and inclusion efforts here at Rivers Casino Pittsburgh. This casino sits blocks away from the neighborhood that I grew up in, so I'm extra proud to be able to say that our company has an excellent reputation and unwavering commitment as it relates to diversity and inclusion. It's not something that we see as a bolt-on initiative that you do once or twice a year. It's very much a business imperative that's embedded into the fabric of everything that we do. This includes our efforts to actively engage or to secure a diverse workforce, our community engagement approach, and our supplier diversity initiatives. I'm going to briefly discuss each of these things, but it's really important to point out that we don't take a one-size-fits-all approach. We customize our initiatives so that they fit the unique needs of each property and we'll continue with that tradition in Portsmouth. Next slide please. As it relates to workforce diversity, we're in the hospitality industry and we have thousands of people from many different backgrounds that come through our doors every single day. As a leader in the industry, it's important for us to constantly think about effective ways to link residents to the many rewarding job opportunities that we have at the casino. We want to make sure that our team members reflect the diversity of the many guests that come enjoy themselves with their family and friends. We work hard to cultivate strategic partnerships in the local community that can help us secure diverse pool candidates. We work closely with community partners to develop customized training programs so that local residents can be successful when they join our team. And we have internship programs that help local college students gain valuable work experience that can often lead to permanent roles within our company. Next slide please. Next slide please. I think it might be stuck on workforce diversity.
No, Ramon, I'm seeing supplier diversity on my screen.
Okay, it's just a community engagement.
I think community engagement now too.
I think it, um, there we go. Rush Street Gaming is very serious about being good corporate citizens who are actively engaged in the many neighborhoods and communities around us. There is, there are a long list of excellent nonprofit organizations that are doing some extremely valuable work in the community. We support their mission by providing charitable donations that allow them to continue their great work. We don't just write checks, we get shoulder to shoulder with community leaders and help them with their service projects that are important to them. This is something that our team loves to do. If you look at the picture here, it's a pre-COVID picture of us taking senior citizens shopping for winter clothes as part of the Salvation Army's Project Bundleup program. And we do projects like this every month. Finally, our leadership team serves on several nonprofit boards and committees and we're just grateful to be able to volunteer our talent and expertise to local nonprofit organizations. Next slide, please. The last area that I'll mention is supplier diversity. Our commitment to diversity and inclusion extends beyond the construction process. It includes millions of dollars of goods and services that we need to operate our casino every year. Our strategic and intentional approach to supplier diversity includes hosting vendor recruiting fairs like the one in this picture in our ballroom, mentoring and educating diverse suppliers who are new to the gaming industry, participating in the many local supplier diversity events that address our procurement needs, supporting and sponsoring organizations that have supplier diversity missions like the Minority Supplier Diversity Council. And finally, we make sure that we're in constant communication with our partners so that we always have access to local business networks. Next slide please. And this slide is just a snapshot of some of our recent and ongoing supplier diversity initiatives in Pennsylvania. As I alluded to earlier, we will customize our approach so that it meets the needs of the city of Portsmouth. I won't read the slide, but you can see how the broad initiatives that I referenced in the previous slide translate to very specific activities in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia in particular. We're fully aware of the best practices and we know that things like matchmaker events, how to do business with Rivers Casino workshops, mentoring, and active memberships in various organizations are the things that help us to be successful in the area of supplier diversity. So again, these are just examples that give you an idea of the type of company that we are and that is coming to Portsmouth. We're excited about what the future holds and we look forward to becoming a pillar in the community. Thanks for having me.
Next slide. So you've heard quite a bit about the sort of the overall and the corporate culture and we wanted to kind of pivot towards what all this means for Portsmouth. And we're going to start with Justin Ballard who is the Director of Business Development for Ballard and Ballard is a well-respected local contractor. That's why they were chosen because of their local presence and their stellar record as a supplier diversity champion. And also, they teamed with Yates Construction, a national firm with tremendous experience in building casinos. So, Justin?
Thanks, Delcino. And thank you everybody for having us this evening. Again, my name is Justin Ballard, SB Ballard Construction Company, Director of Business Development for SB Ballard, but also here representing the joint venture. You know, we do a lot of joint ventures, but it's not always the case where you have two large, you have two companies that really have their world moral compass kind of aligning, you know. We have SB Ballard being the local content here. We've been here 43 years, built many of the buildings that you all know and love and probably went through over the years. But then we have Yates Construction who is the national casino builder that has, needs no introduction when it comes to the resume portfolio of different projects of this caliber. And so, when you have two companies like that that have the same culture, all the same things are important and that really kind of plays into the small business and disadvantaged business practices that we both foster. Really, it's really part of our DNA. You know, SB Ballard started as a subcontractor and self-performing concrete and really, we didn't get a chance to get to be where we are today without people helping us in debundling different scopes of work and allowing us to get a shot at some of these larger contracts. And so, our process and things that we do are just that. I mentioned during our small business trade event that if you were a small mason, for example, you might see some $300 million project and assume that that project's too large for you and really that couldn't be further from the truth. What we've, what we do is we break those scopes apart and allow those smaller businesses to participate with the larger businesses and that helps obviously for, you know, helping in that. But what it also does is it gives opportunity for them to be that larger business one day and I think that's important and that's how SB Ballard got to where we were. So we're trying to play that forward and that's just what we do at all levels and having Yates do the same thing and having that match has been real special. So we're excited about the project from that level especially. Next slide. So this, just a couple, couple of quick snapshots of some facts and figures. I mentioned the trade partner event that we had, 1,400 people registered. We do, we do these for almost every project and having 1,400 people register for a project just is real testament about how everybody is excited about the project. And, you know, you might think that we have, going back to the same amount of people that is going to be a part of our portfolio of trade partners that we've had over the years and many of that is true. You can see here on the bottom bullet here, 14% of that were those existing relationships that we've built alongside Delcino, for example, over the years to bring those trade partners back to the project. But what I think is probably more impressive, at least from my mind, is the 10% of the new SWAM and/or small disadvantaged businesses coming and that we have not worked with before. So you're really getting that word out and getting both the new and the existing small and disadvantaged businesses, SWAM businesses, a part of the project. To me, just shows how powerful that event was and I think we're going to be doing more of those and we're excited about it because that's what's really going to bring full participation in the project.
Thanks, Justin. Next slide. And this is an overview of what the, what the project is going to mean. Here, just a few numbers I wanted to share with you. 1,300 permanent jobs and about 1,400 construction jobs and then north of $300 million for this, this is a significant investment for Rush Street Investment, Rush Street Gaming and they have every intention of being a long-term partner with the city of Portsmouth. These are some of the amenities and I'm going to go into detail with those a little later, but we're going to have the gaming floor, have the lounge area. We're going to have various dining options from fine dining to casual dining, multi-purpose room, center, space for outdoor entertainment. And of course, all of this is being master planned to include a hotel. And so, we're just waiting for the lottery to give us our approval so we can start getting shovels in the ground. Next slide please. And wanted to share with you that we haven't been idle. We're not just sitting around waiting on the lottery. We've been doing quite a bit. We've been conducting briefings to stakeholders in civic business faith-based groups and we're continuing to do that and we will remain doing that even after we open because we want to maintain that lines of communication. We, you may recall, we had a virtual job fair back in September where we had hundreds expressing interest in that. We're having tremendous success in partnering with TCC. This, you see the image there of the Portsmouth campus. They're going to work with us and with their students and with some of the programming. Hampton Roads Workforce Council will assist us with events for workforce and job opportunities and I'm on both of those boards, so I certainly have a vested interest in making sure that they're at the table when we discuss outreach efforts. We're planning with those partners. Matter of fact, Norfolk State's already reached out and expressed interest, so we're talking to Norfolk State as well and they will partner with us on the virtual information forum coming up next month and you'll hear more about that. And we've had some very great discussions, positive discussions with minority investors because as you know, and we were asked to do this. This is part of the culture that Ramon talked about to offer equity to investors, minority investors, either 5% or $5 billion, whichever is greater. And so, we've been talking to, quite frankly, dozens of minority investors right here in Portsmouth. And this is a real honor here to introduce you to some team members. Many of you, I made a commitment, this is the Miles Agency, made a commitment to hire from Portsmouth and that's what I've done. And so, I want to introduce those new members. They all are seasoned communications professionals and they live right here in Portsmouth and they're going to briefly say hello. We'll start with Ms. Kim Bracy who will be assisting me with briefings and event support and reaching out to the community. Kim?
Good evening, everyone. Kim Bracy, I am excited about working on the team. I have 25 years' experience in corporate communications. Public relations, having worked for international paper as a Senior Corporate Communications Manager as well as serving in various capacities within healthcare and education. Currently, I serve in a PR capacity with a regional education organization on the peninsula and just look forward to serving my community, the city of Portsmouth. And thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening.
Thank you, Kim. And we also have another Kim, Kim Wembish. She'll be working with me too with social media and event planning. She'll be working with me too with social media and event planning. And she's just a rock star when it comes to all things social media and grassroots and community engagement. So, Kim?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Rush Street. Thank you, Del Cino Miles, for the opportunity. I look forward to working and serving the citizens in Portsmouth and representing the casino. I will make sure that we are live on social media and making sure that we are the voice for the community and everything is illustrated well. I look forward to this opportunity. I have been serving the residents in the city of Portsmouth and beyond Hampton Roads for the last several years in this community. And so, I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kim. And we also have Kelly Webb. She is President of KBD Group. She will be assisting me with media relations and public relations. Kelly?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Webb with the KBD Group and we are a SWAM-certified public relations and marketing agency. And we've been serving businesses and nonprofits in the region for about 10 years now. As part of that, we've cultivated very strong relationships with the media, so we're excited to sink our teeth in this piece of the project. I'm also a very proud resident of the city of Portsmouth. I've been here for 15 years. My family is from this fine city and so, I'm very invested in seeing our city thrive. And I'm really excited to partner with Rush Street, with the city of Portsmouth, the Miles Agency, and two other very well-established seasoned PR practitioners here on the call this evening, who are also committed to ensuring the economic vitality of our city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And as you can see, I have, this is a strong team. Very appropriate during this Women's History Month that these strong women that are communications specialists and Portsmouth residents, but they're all ready to, they're on the team and they will be assisting us with our robust community outreach. So, thank you, ladies. Next slide. So next, we'll have Steve Romine with, he's an attorney with Williams Mullen, and he will give you a little bit more information about the site plan. Steve?
Thank you, Del Cino. Good evening, Mayor Glover, and honorable members of the City Council. I'm Steve Romine with the local law firm of Williams Mullen. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'll be brief and I'll be giving you an overview of the physical aspects of the site, including the site plan and a brief summary of our real estate approvals. So on this first slide, it will orient you to the site. As shown, the property outlined in red encompasses approximately 56 acres. This 56 acres comprises the property that'll be included in the initial boundaries of the Entertainment District. As you may recall, the city rezoned this property to MUH zoning and adopted the Entertainment District ordinance late last year. You'll note the property has easy access from I-264, which has three lanes of traffic moving both east and west. As travelers exit the interstate, they'll come down the ramp onto Victory Boulevard. The primary access to the property will be from Victory Boulevard onto Freedom Avenue. You'll also notice our proximity to the Tidewater Community College campus in the southeast corner of the district. Also, please note the various drive times from the various cities in Virginia and North Carolina. We would expect to attract patrons to this first-class, high-quality destination from a great distance. Clearly, if we're the first land-based casino operating in Virginia, Portsmouth will obtain a first-mover advantage. Next slide, please. This slide shows in more detail and is the conceptual site plan. You'll notice the primary access will be from Victory Boulevard onto Freedom Avenue. We plan to construct a roundabout, that green circle you see there, which provide easy access to enter the casino property. We also have plans to extend campus drive through to McLean Street, thereby providing additional ingress and egress and enhancing circulation. There's also a write-out onto Victory Boulevard shown halfway through the property on Victory there. As a part of our filing, we prepared a VDOT 527 plan to address the rows and potential traffic impacts. The plan indicates various improvements for entrance lanes as shown in the plan and will be constructed as part of the development. The casino development partial shown is approximately 39 acres of the Entertainment District overlay. The undeveloped property to the east along McLean Street comprising of two parcels and the property south of Freedom Avenue, which you really can't see all of on this plan, are the property that comprises about 17 acres of the balance of the Entertainment District. The Entertainment District can also be expanded in the future. You'll note the existing BMP will be relocated to the northwest corner of the property and will provide a five-acre water feature in Focal Point. The proposed event lawn will butt the lake and allow for outdoor entertainment and gatherings. The casino will be the anchor and catalyst to the establishment of the Entertainment District. The parking shown will be sufficient to meet the parking demand. Several HRT bus stations adjacent to the Entertainment District will be relocated to accommodate patrons and employees. Rush Street filed its master plan and use permits on February 19, which will allow the construction of the casino development. We expect the applications to be heard by the Planning Commission in April and to be heard by City Council in May. If we can stay on this timeline, it will put the Portsmouth Casino in position to be the first casino in Virginia to be built. Next slide, please. So to briefly recap, Portsmouth has adopted an Entertainment District ordinance and 56 acres are being master planned for inclusion. 39 acres of that 56 acres will comprise a casino development, which can only exist in an Entertainment District. The Entertainment District will include other mixes of use. The casino will be the anchor and catalyst for a successful world-class destination. There will be substantial opportunity for additional development in this areas of the city. Thank you for the opportunity of addressing this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Next slide. Well, as you've heard and seen, that we have a firm commitment and you've certainly partnered with a seasoned and experienced industry leader with a great record of success and quality and integrity. Here are a few renderings, some of these you may have seen in other presentations, just giving you an idea of what success could look like. So, just keep flipping through. Next slide. These are just various renderings. You see the hotel there. Here's the approach to the entrance. Next slide. And as you can see, you'll be able to see this from 264, so it'd be a great landmark. And certainly, this entire project will certainly be a catalyst for economic growth and investment. But at the same time, certainly, it could be a tool to extend your tourism season and be a true destination, year-long destination. Because as you know, in this area, our tourist season tends to be between Memorial Day and Labor Day, so certainly, we want to extend that and have a year-long destination. And we certainly are excited about the opportunity to play that role. Next slide. Next slide. So the hotel will certainly be visible, not only from 264, but from above. So we're looking forward to this opportunity to bring this, to bring this project to fruition. Can't wait. Next slide. And just a little bit more detail about some of the amenities I mentioned earlier. We talked about the hotel. You see that we're master planning to include a hotel in Portsmouth. That's the top image, the middle image. They've already developed a hotel in Schenectady. It's branded the Landing and they're planning and currently developing another Landing Hotel at the Pittsburgh site, and that's the bottom image there. Next slide. And in late January, just before the Super Bowl, the lottery authorized Bet Rivers Sportsbook to go online. And so, that's been active, but they certainly will be a part of this first-class attraction at the casino. Next. And I mentioned before, fine dining options for the entire family. For those who may not be gamers or into gaming, there's opportunities in taking dinner and show perhaps. So fine dining or casual dining, so all sorts of options will be available right here in Portsmouth. Next slide. And there will be some luxury lounges to relax after work or meet friends, just a network, business network and opportunities. Next slide. And really, a multifunctional event center, everything from weddings to graduation parties, special events, concerts, maybe even you could have one of your council retreats there. So it'll be multiple functions for this event center. So really, it's much more than a casino. It's really an entertainment center. So you have the gaming and you have the lounges and you have the dining, you have the event center. So there's going to be so much there to offer your visitors as well as your residents. Next slide. And we talked about live entertainment, so there's going to be an outdoor venue as well as an indoor venue to host festivals and other special events. And I know that Portsmouth has a myriad of outdoor activities and when we get through this pandemic, this will certainly be a resource and a location to consider having some of those events. Next slide. And just wanted to summarize with the economic impacts. As we mentioned, the 1,400 construction-related jobs, over $300 million investment, and millions of that will be going to local and minority businesses. We have that commitment. And 1,300 permanent good-paying jobs at the casino with opportunities for advancement. $200 million annual economic impact in the local Portsmouth and the 757 in the region. And then $16 million in taxes to the city, to the city coffers. Next slide. And our vision for Portsmouth, again, we're excited about this partnership with you. And it truly is a partnership, we want to walk alongside you and have a collaborative effort and leverage the experience that you've heard tonight. With Rush Street Gaming, they have tremendous experience in building and managing and running casinos. So we want to leverage that and be a leader in diversity. You heard Ramon talk about the things that they're already doing. And we've started a little bit of that now here, right here in Portsmouth, reaching out to various stakeholder groups and organizations. And certainly want to be a great place to work as well as an economic catalyst. And we've already started cultivating relationships for community partnerships. And certainly, we want to become the first permanent casino to open in Virginia. And so, we want to be right there with the city of Portsmouth as we realize that. Next slide. And I'm your point of contact, local contact, the lead community and public relations. You have our website there. We're keeping updates on the project and that's also where vendors and those who are interested in working with us can share their information with us. Next slide. And we truly thank you for this opportunity and we thank you for choosing Rush Street Gaming to be your partner in this amazing, exciting project, transformational project. And last slide is we'll take your questions. Thank you for this opportunity. We'll open it up to questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Del Cino and Rush Street Gaming and Attorney Romine and Ballard Construction, everybody included who has participated in this presentation. We appreciate your commitment, what you just showed us to Portsmouth. And we look forward to working with you collaboratively to be the first, the first casino to operate here in the state of Virginia. And we look forward to many more successful opportunities together. With that said, I would like to begin to open the floor of questions for my colleagues. And I see that Vice Mayor Barnes has his hand up, so you have the floor, sir.
I wanted to know, when the casino is first built, what amenities will be included right at first, built conception?
That's a great question. Mike Tobin? You're muted, Mike.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, we'll have the full gaming floor. There'll be, I gotta count here, we got, we got six different restaurant venues that we've got, the event center. We'll have a poker room, the sportsbook, a high-limit area for gaming. One of the restaurants is designed so that it will be accessible from inside the casino and outside the casino. So if people want to come to the restaurant and are not coming specifically for gaming, they can go to the restaurant. It'll have outdoor dining as well. We've got a fine dining restaurant that fronts on the lake, which will also have outdoor dining. And as Del Cino said earlier, we really see this as an entertainment development. Gaming may be the anchor, but we're providing a lot of variety of entertainment spaces. We'll have, I'll call it a nightclub. It's more like a dance club that will be a part of the venue as well, that'll have live bands. So both the event center and the dance club will be performance venues for live entertainment. The event center, obviously, being larger, can accommodate larger entertainment acts. The club would be a smaller band or trio or something like that.
So, will the, will the hotel be built when the casino is built?
We're looking at the timing of the hotel. You know, the hotel industry has really been, well, hotel and entertainment, but certainly the hospitality industry has been extraordinarily hard-hit by the COVID virus. And what's very challenging is trying to figure out what the proper design is for a hotel in the post-COVID world so that guests feel comfortable coming. But what's particularly important for us is that the hotel is an amenity to the whole entertainment center that we've got. So we want to make sure that we've got the right types of rooms, the right mix of rooms, so the people that are staying at the hotel are also participating in the other venues that we're developing as part of the casino project.
So I didn't get the answer. Did you say if the casino was going to be coming right when the, I meant, the hotel was coming right when the casino was built, they'll come simultaneously together?
They're not right now assumed to be starting simultaneously. We're designing the project so that we can start the hotel at any given time. But just the nature of the hotel itself being a taller building and taking longer to build, even if we started them simultaneously, the hotel would still open later than the casino. Our goal, as the mayor just said, is to be the first permanent casino open in the state of Virginia. So we really focused on how we can get the casino open as quickly as possible.
But when will the, so when will the hotel be built?
I don't have a definite answer for that. I'd like to give you a definite answer. There's a timeframe in our development agreement that deals with the development schedule for the hotel. Our goal is to get the hotel open at a time that it can be most effective for being a successful addition to the community of Portsmouth. And I'm sorry, I'm honestly sorry, I can't give you a more definitive answer because I don't have a more definitive answer.
So are we even guaranteed to get the hotel?
Yes. Absolutely, we're building a hotel. The development agreement that we have provides for a hotel. And we built into the development agreement, as we were negotiating last year, the flexibility so that the hotel can open when it will be successful. The last thing any of us want to do is have a hotel that opens at the wrong time relative to the hotel and hospitality market and is not successful. Because that will hurt the community. It will be detrimental to revenues in the casino. Because you want to make, you want to make sure that the hotel really reinforces the purpose of building the entertainment center with the casino so that it's the most successful for the community because you're sharing the revenue with us too.
Mayor, I'll come back later with some questions. I know I asked a few already.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
He's muted.
You're muted, sir. You're muted, sir. You're muted, sir.
I'm sorry.
My question is hotel-related as well. I, I heard the dialogue. So as I understand it, greenlighting the hotel is dependent upon the hospitality industry recovering more from the pandemic? Are, are there other factors on Russia's side?
Well, there's, I had to look at, make sure I wasn't muted. There are specific timeframes in the development agreement for the development of the hotel. So, you know, I don't want people to think that it's open-ended and it, and it could be years until there's a hotel. There's a very specific timeframe and it's a relatively short schedule. We've, we've developed a lot of hotels. When I say we, I'm saying Neil Bluman is, is various companies over the last 50 years have developed quite a few hotels. So this is not a new venture for us in terms of development. We're experienced hotel developers and operators. And and our focus is on defining what the program for the hotel needs to be. And one of the things that informs that is, is the, the numbers of, of guests and the types of guests that are using the casinos. So that we've got a hotel that is of interest to, to that profile of, of people that are, are coming in. One of the, the big users of hotels and our casinos are, are VIP guests. And until we have a real good sense of, of who those guests might be in Portsmouth, we don't want to build the wrong hotel.
So the performance of the casino i- is somewhat predicated on the, the type of hotel? And how about the, the number of rooms? Is that predicated on the casino performance as well?
To a, to a large extent. And I say that in, in a, if we were in a location where there was a, a, a strong, I'll say independent leisure travel group or business travel group that needs hotels, we'd be factoring into the, the general market as well. We believe in Portsmouth that the, the, the gaming customer may have more of an impact on the size of the hotel than it might. You know, say if, if we were doing a casino in a, a larger city where there's, there is a multitude of, of different types of travelers that are using hotels.
What was the, in the other areas, what, what was the time difference between their casino being completed and the hotel?
In Schenectady, the hotel opened about six months after the, the casino opened. Pittsburgh, obviously, we haven't opened the hotel yet because we had to stop construction because the state shut down all construction because of COVID. It was, it was actually scheduled to open literally this month. We had hoped to open it in March of, of this year. But I would say there, had it opened on time, it's probably about three or four years after the casino opened.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, Mayor, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this presentation. It was quite enlightening, even though I've seen it or heard some of the information before, it's always good to get it again. And I guess a, a lot of us had the same questions about the hotel, the brand, you know, the size, the number of floors, the number of rooms. But we understand now that that'll come later after, you know, some of the casino develop, you know, participation has underwent. I thought that we learned early on in the project that it would be in phases. So the casino with surface parking would be a phase. And then later would be the hotel and garage parking in a phase two. And then entertainment district coming in a phase three or however. I'm not sure if that's still the factors with that. But before you answer that, I want to thank Del Cino Miles and her new pay team. I love this Kim Wimbers, Kim Bracy and Kelly Davis Webb, especially in, in this Women's History Month. So I'm excited about how you're starting this up already. That's part of the diversity and the women inclusion for me. But yes, those concerns, not concerns, but just some questions that we had about are we still on track with the phase one, phase two, phase three approaches?
Yes, we are. What you described is, is the way we've, we've put the master plan together. So the first phase of, of construction is the casino. And as you pointed out, the surface parking, the, the hotel would be the, the next phase. And we have, we have enough parking shown in this, in the plans that you've seen today to support the hotel and the casino. If a garage is needed, that would be as a result of future development of the, the entertainment retail or, or other retail that's, that's developed.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor. You're muted, sir.
I want to thank each of you for the presentation and the information that was presented. I did have a follow-up question. As far as the hotel is concerned, the schematic, the schematic drawings that have been presented. I understand that you said tonight, Mr. Tobin, that the hotel is going to be conditioned on the traffic that the casino is able to accumulate over time.
Well, I don't want you to think that it's conditioned on the, the traffic from the, the casino. But it's, it's informed by the traffic from the casino. Because the, the hotel needs to, to be designed so that it meets the, the needs of the guests that are, are looking for, for hotel accommodations in that area. The single largest traffic generator right now is, is the casino because of the number of people that will be coming to the casino. As other things develop in the area, there may be other traffic generators that would create a need for a hotel in this location. But right now, the, the, the concentration of both people and businesses around the site is not high enough that the casino is not going to have a major impact on the demand for the hotel.
Right. So this, so the schematic doesn't really represent what the hotel actually will appear to be?
No, it does. The, the schematic that's shown is the location for the hotel. It's the footprint for the hotel. And it's a height that as we've been working with the, the zoning people at the, the city, is something that was supported by the city staff. Obviously, it's all subject to, to, to further review and, and official adoption. But this is a master plan that governs the long-term development for the casino and the hotel.
Okay, regardless of how you are informed by the casino attending?
Yeah, what I, what I should clarify is, is what I'm talking about is the, the size of rooms, the mix of rooms, the types of amenities that we fit within this envelope. And that's, that's, that's the art of the programming, so to speak, as opposed to the, the, the design.
Okay. What, what are the metrics that have to be met in determining what that hotel will eventually look like?
It would, it would, it would depend upon, you know, I don't want to use the term depend because it's, I, I've been doing this for a lot of years. And, and I, I gotta think outside my, my sort of knowledge zone as to what you do. But it's, it's certainly the age of, of the likely guests. Because every age group has a different requirement of, of what they expect in a hotel. It will be the frequency of guests. So if somebody is coming, for example, and they're going to stay for a, a single night, they expect a hotel of a different type than somebody who's coming for an extended stay. And by extended stay, I mean literally an extended stay hotel, which is somebody coming for two or three weeks. If it's a businessman or, or woman that's coming to a hotel, they require a completely different type of accommodation than a leisure traveler. So one of the things that, that we've been looking at is what, what will the types of people coming to the casino want in a hotel? Many of our hotel guests at our casinos are comped. They're, they're VIP guests and as part of their experience, they get either a reduced cost or a, a free stay in the hotel. And they expect a different type of environment than, than a family that's coming to stay at a hotel.
So, so it's purely social data, no economic metrics that have to be met in determining your next steps with the hotel?
The, the economic data is, is really more a function of the, the economics of the, the, the visitors to the, the area and the, the visitors to the, the guests at the casino. You know, I'd, I'd be foolish to say that you don't look at any economics because obviously we have to, to develop the business plan as to, to, and how you operate the hotel. But there, there's a range and it varies from, from, from the time of the year too. Hotels, as, if interview are familiar with hotels, hotels do dynamic pricing throughout the year. So that, that the, the profile of guests in one time of the year is different than it is the other time. And you, you price to respond to the, the market that's there. But what's really key for our hotel is it's, it's got to match the economics of the, the casino guests. So that the people staying at the hotel are also people that want to visit the, the casino. And conversely, the people that are at the casino want to visit the hotel. Because it's a very synergistic approach that we take.
The, the other locations where you have the casinos, what is, is their population demographics comparable to Portsmouth?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The other locations, Pittsburgh, Des Plaines, Philadelphia, Schenectady, do they have population demographics similar to Portsmouth?
It's a very hard question for me to answer because when I'm thinking Schenectady, for example, does not have the regional population. I don't think that Hampton Roads has got. Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, obviously, are much more urban. So they're, the, the, the types of, of demographics there are different. And, and Rivers and Des Plaines is completely different. Rivers and Des Plaines is, is very close to the airport. It's a comparatively dense suburb. And it's much more, it's, 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 it gets a, a much different type of guest because we do have people coming from a, a much broader geographic area. Although all of our casinos, in terms of the distance that they draw from us, similar to, to what we talked about in terms of travel distances to, to different areas in the Hampton Roads area in Virginia.
Any, any information on the poverty level?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. We could get it for you, but I don't have it.
Well, I was just curious. It would seem like that would be something that would have been taken into account to see the impact on the community. Particularly when you talk about bringing in, I think the figure I saw was 1,400 construction jobs and 1,300 permanent jobs. And my concern has always been, it's not really, in a city that has a high poverty level such as Portsmouth, the, the issue is not jobs. The issue is wage because we have people who are working poor. And so I'm, I'm, I'm more interested in hearing when you say good paying and 1,400, 1,300 jobs. And then we hear some of those jobs are conditional on the hotel. And so I'm, I haven't, I haven't heard any information. I just hear that this figure about jobs, but there's no information that's been given about wages. And as you know, this pandemic has exposed the fact that persons need to be making living wages, not just working jobs. So that, that would be information I would want to hear. Also, in your presentation, this is a majority African-American city. And it concerns me when I hear developers giving information on minority participation. And they package it in terms of SWAM. SWAM does not inform us in this community. Because when you talk about what SWAM means, small, 99% of the businesses in Virginia are small. Women, some of these businesses are not just purely women-owned. We, we know that there are some other things that are put in place. But what is of importance that I tend to like to see disaggregated is the minority. Because it is a predominantly African-American community. And none of your data disaggregates what SWAM actually has meant for your organization. And, and I would like to see that information presented as, as well before we make any, to help make informed decisions.
Dr. Whitaker, I'd like to address some of that. In terms of the wages, we do, the casino does pay very competitive wages with, with benefits. And so, and those for full-time jobs. So these are not going to be minimum wage type jobs, very competitive and living wages, you mentioned. And in terms of demographics, Philadelphia is an urban location. And so, and, and particularly in that particular area of Philadelphia, it was urban and sort of under, undercapitalized, if you will. And so having Rush Street come in, it really transformed that area because there was high crime at the time. And, and so all of that was, was diminished with creating those, of those good paying jobs with benefits. And you're also a community. And in terms of, and I understand completely that the SWAM distinction, that's why we want to partner with organizations like N W A P and other groups to make sure that we have identified individuals who, who can help fill that pipeline, if you will, Dr. Whitaker. So we want to partner with, we're not going to do this in a silo. So you know your community and you're passionate about it. And I, and I know you're a record of, for, for diversity and equity. And so we want to work alongside you and identify the partners that can help us to fill that pipeline, to identify those jobs and make sure people apply for those jobs. And not just the, the jobs, but for careers, not just entry level, but man, get on the management track. So it's important that I want to share with you that we're already have that in our, in our game plan, if you will, to, to partner with Portsmouth-based. We, we are committed to the Portsmouth first and we understand that approach. And so we, we are honoring that commitment. And so that's why we want to partner with established and respected organizations in Portsmouth to assist us with identifying individuals, whether they're African-American or women or older, younger, what have you. You have to be 21 to work in the casino. But for the most part, we want to make sure we team with folks who can help us fill the pipeline and make sure that folks have a fair opportunity for, whether it be a contract or a career opportunity with the casino. And remember, this is the casino, it's, it's the, it's the, it's the hotel, it's the restaurants. And also, don't forget the, the, the professional support. It's not just folks at the tables that you see on TV and in the movies. It's, it's marketing, it's accounting, it's, it's legal services, so professional services as well. So it's the whole gamut, Dr. Whitaker. So I just wanted to show you that we are, and I'd love to have a conversation with you about working with the faith-based community. Because I know there are a lot of workforce initiatives in the faith-based community. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel as much as we just need to make sure that we open the doors and no one is siloed and that we can work together. Because this is a collaborative and it's a collaborative effort and it's a partnership. So there are two people in the partnership. So we, we stand ready to do our part.
Right. Well, yeah, well, you know, it's, it's not, it's, it's not so much of, you know, partnering with me. It's a matter of the commitment of the organization. And what, what I'm sharing is that with the number of casinos that you have, that, that this organization has built, it's, it should be readily available data. And I'm talking from a procurement standpoint, as far as even the construction and the building. But as far as the people working there, that still does not address the issue of wages. And what will be, when you say good paying, all I'm asking is that we be given information on that. Because I have not seen a model yet where a casino uplifts a community with poverty levels like we see here. And so if that's what's being proposed, I think we should have concrete data, that which is measurable, not just saying good paying jobs. And so that's, that's what I'm, that's, that's not going to be resolved tonight. And I'm saying that's something that I think that we should be given to help in making informed decisions.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I want to clarify, by the way, I, excuse me, some data on the number of people working at the casino. Almost all of them are at the casino. The hotel adds very few people because we manage and operate the hotel with the same staff that works at the casino. So when the hotel is built, there'll be probably thirty to fifty jobs added to the total that we had said would be working at the casino. So I just want to make sure people understood that it's not a huge number of jobs in the hotel as compared to the casino.
Do any other colleagues have a question? Councilmember Wooder? Yes, sir. You have the floor?
Thank you, man. How you doing there, Mr. Mike? So from what I'm understanding, the hotel will be developed with direct reflection from the casino revenue? Is that a realistic analysis of what's going on at the casino?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So how the casino perform, would that determine how fast we get our casino here in Portsmouth?
To some extent. And I say that because there are revenue stipulations in the development agreement. But it's only part of the answer. Because there are requirements in the development agreement that gives the city of Portsmouth the ability to say to us, it's now time you have to build the hotel. There isn't anything in the development agreement, from our perspective, for example, that says, we only build the hotel when these thresholds are met. So it's the, it's sort of the resources that Portsmouth has to compel a hotel to be built. And we can start the hotel at a schedule that's independent of what's in the development agreement. It's only a revenue requirement that says the hotel must be built when you reach a certain revenue threshold.
Right, but if it's performing well, if it's comping, if it's doing exactly what it need, probably breaking goals, it should be sped up. The project should be moved to a closer date of construction, right?
I think that's a fair statement.
Right. Okay, okay. Also, I got a question as well. I know you beside a state-of-the-art community college. Is there anything in the language of your contract that is required for you guys to do any beautification that's just not contributing to the casino itself but along the Victory Boulevard highway?
There's nothing in the development agreement that specifically says that. But we've had discussions about what we would be doing. And I thought you were going in a different direction. Because I also want to, no, but I also want to point out that one of the things we do, and we've made this commitment to Portsmouth, is community involvement and financial support for community events and things that are important to the community that are not specific to our site. So I think the answer is that absolutely there would be collateral benefits that we participate in in some way.
So not directly for Victory Boulevard, but for just random events and locations?
Yes, and I would like to-
Of all choice?
I would like to answer that a little. So we do a number of service projects. We do donations, charitable donations. We'll go into the community and we'll do beautification projects on a regular basis. So here in Pittsburgh, we'll go out once a month and partner with a nonprofit organization that wants to see something happen in their community. It could be, you know, blocks away, a small drive away from the casino. So it's not necessarily right at our doorstep. But we're very much, we pride ourselves on being embedded in the community. And that's something that's really important to us. So we spend a lot of extra dollars that aren't necessarily tied into, you know, what we have to do. But it's just something that we do to be good corporate citizens.
The other thing I'd like to add is, these are long-term investments for us. These are privately owned, they're owner-operated. We're members of the community, we're your neighbors, you're our neighbors. And we want to help our neighbors. We're not coming in to say, we're building a casino here on this site and we're not going to participate with anything else. We want to be welcome to the community because we want to be seen as somebody that's going to be a good neighbor and we can help wherever we can.
I wanted to add one thing about the jobs. I really want to, I just want to make this point about the type of jobs that we'll have here. I kind of alluded that I grew up, you know, blocks away from this casino here in Pittsburgh. So predominantly African American community that I grew up in. And one of the things in working here, when I see people get linked to the type of jobs here, it's, they aren't just jobs, it's a career. And we invest in our team members and we help them, you know, we get them the training that they need even before they come here. So we'll partner with like the local community colleges, the workforce development agencies, get people trained up so they can actually get in the type of jobs that they could provide, you know, for their families. And then when they get here, we advance and promote people internally all the time. Over two thousand people have been promoted within our company. And that's something that, again, we take pride in. And, you know, there's a learning curve with a casino. So a lot of, what I do is I'll go out into the community and just educate people on the type of jobs that are here, because they just see table games. But, you know, we got a huge food and beverage department, we got security, we got environmental services where, you know, in terms of our cleaning staff, we got slot operations, we got cage cashiers, facilities department, marketing, HR, IT, like. So we got en valet. So there's a lot of entry points. But I always say, hey, don't look at where you get in. That might be the starting point for you. But if you have a hospitality spirit and you're someone who really wants to love to be around people, we make sure we train those people up. Once we get the people, the right people on the bus, we can shuffle them around and get them in the right seat. And they can have really successful careers here.
The other thing I'd like to add, because I've been doing a little checking while we've been talking here to try and get some answers to some of the questions that I couldn't answer myself. And I'm not sure this information is necessarily going to answer the questions as well as I would like. But for example, in Schenectady and Philadelphia, the average household income within twenty-five minutes of those casinos is lower than it is within twenty-five minutes of Portsmouth. So we've got very good experience working in communities that have a similar or perhaps not even as advantaged a demographic as we have here in Portsmouth. So we train people, as Ramon just said. We've got a good working relationship with other community colleges in our other locations. And Dulcino, I didn't notice whether you had talked about Norfolk State in your talks. But we've been talking with TCC. Norfolk State had approached us recently about working with us on training people. So we'll get you more information and more detail on demographics and questions you had asked in a separate package.
And I will add, in terms of percentages, our Illinois property, people of color represent over sixty percent of our team members in our Illinois property. In Philadelphia, it's fifty-eight percent of people of color in our Philadelphia property. Now, I don't have, you know, the breakdown of each demographic, but in general, that's where we are. I think you had your hand up, Dr. Whitaker.
I had you.
You muted, you muted, sir.
Once again, the information that I'm asking about deals with the economics, the wages, not the percentage of the people working there. Because, you know, we can cite a whole lot of statistics of where you had one hundred percent African Americans working, but they weren't being paid.
We can get you the information you're asking.
Mr. Tobin, you just mentioned, I just want to make sure I heard you clear. What was that you said about Philadelphia and Schenectady, the surrounding area?
The average household income within twenty-five minutes of the casinos there is lower than the average household income within twenty-five minutes of our Portsmouth location.
Right, but you didn't have that information for where you actually are located. You were saying, you were talking about where it's away from. Is that where you're drawing your employees?
If we draw, if we draw a circle, that is the population within a twenty-five minute travel time from the casino in Philadelphia, Schenectady, and Portsmouth, the average household income in Portsmouth is higher than it was in Schenectady and Philadelphia. So my reason for bringing it up is to show that we've got experience working in communities that are not necessarily all high-income communities. And it was to address your question earlier about the-
Well, what I was saying is, you're saying twenty-five minutes away. I was talking about the community where the casino is actually located. Now, are those employees coming from twenty-five minutes away to work at the casino?
It's within the twenty-five mile, I mean, twenty-five, it's within the twenty-five minute travel distance. So it could be a five-minute distance, a ten-minute distance, twenty-five. So it's the population contained within that circle.
Well, the real saying is, because if they're lower than Portsmouth and they're working at your casinos, then that's the issue that I've been raising. What has been the impact then of the casinos on uplifting those communities? And if they're lower than Portsmouth, then I don't think that that is something that reflects well. Because Portsmouth, the poverty rate here is not good.
We will get to a better answer than I just gave you.
What was a true answer?
I, yes, but I will get you, I will get you a better, truer answer.
I got something, Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the question.
You guys mentioned that you have a Portsmouth First motto. With that being said, do you have a percentage of how many Portsmouth residents you look to hire? And also a percentage of how many contracts and subcontracts will you be dedicating to Portsmouth?
Dulcino or Ramon, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, the Portsmouth First, we're certainly, as I mentioned before, in order to identify the candidates in Portsmouth, we are going to be partnering and reaching out to, whether it's TCC, NAACP, and other groups in Portsmouth to help us out to keep that pipeline for the Portsmouth candidates. But we certainly want to spread a wide net to make sure that those who want to work here have an opportunity to work here, that they apply, whether it be contracts or jobs. So certainly, we're going to be partnering with your Portsmouth resources and organizations to help us to fill that pipeline, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I asked because, you know, when businesses come, they always say that they're going to bring business, I mean, jobs and all that good stuff. But they never make a commitment to hire the people in that city. So that's why I asked about the percentage. Because the Portsmouth people are not the ones benefited from it. Because that's an elected official, as a council person. My job is to look out for Portsmouth people, not the surroundings that is for Portsmouth residents. So I wanted to know if you guys had a percentage that you put on it to truly dedicate to that Portsmouth First motto that you have?
And I understand your question. You're asking if there is a set percentage where we say, we want this exact percentage to come from Portsmouth?
At least that percentage.
So I would say that we don't have an exact percentage that we say, you know, we want from Portsmouth. But the commitment is there. I mean, we, there's so many benefits to having people who, you know, live close to the property, work in there. And, you know, that's something that we've done everywhere we go. We developed these partnerships for a reason. Because they help us to get the people that we need to fill the thirteen hundred jobs that we have. And so although I can't specifically answer the question about the percentage, I'll say that that commitment is definitely there. Something that we've done everywhere that we, that we have a property.
So basically, we, so my question is this. For the other projects that you guys have, do you know what the percentage is when it comes to hiring that city resident?
We can go back and take a look at that, Vice Mayor. So we certainly don't want to just throw numbers out at you. So if you don't mind, we'd like to go back and give you some real numbers, if you're okay with that.
Vice Mayor, ma'am. Vice Mayor, this is Justin Ballard. I just wanted to touch on one thing on the construction side of it, if I may?
Yes.
So obviously, with our longstanding history here in the Hampton Roads area and building, for example, TCC Portsmouth, we have a lot of good contractors that come out of Portsmouth. So I don't have a percentage to give you today on what that percentage is from a construction standpoint. But I can tell you that there's a lot of good talent. We would actually be trying to pull talent out of Portsmouth regardless. Just because of that reason.
All right, and my last question, Mayor. Just for the purposes of the citizens, I wanted to know, what is the timeframe of the entire project?
Well, a lot depends on the lottery when we get those approvals. So we get those approvals by summer or so, then by early fall, we expect to put shovels in the ground. And then uses about two, takes about two years from the start of construction to complete. So late delivery of the, and having the opening of the facility, Mr. Vice Mayor, we're looking at late twenty-two, early twenty-twenty-three.
And that's just the casino, that's not all the extra amenities that we discussed earlier, correct?
It does. If you're talking about the restaurants and the casino, well, that's why I say, because it's more than a casino. It's really an entertainment venue. So it's the gaming floor, it's the restaurant, and the lounges as well. All the amenities that I had mentioned before. So it's not just the gaming floor.
But not the hotel.
In twenty-twenty-three?
Excuse me?
I just want to make sure I understand what your question is.
So so you're saying when the casino is completed, that doesn't include the hotel? Because I was talking about the entire project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, okay. I think Mike addressed a lot of the hotel, the timing of the hotel, so.
Yeah, I wanted to know for clarification purposes because more people has joined in on Facebook regarding this meeting. Because it's publicly out to the public.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? I'm Dr. Whitaker. I think Councilwoman Lucas Burke had her hand up first, ma'am. And then you can go, sir.
Great, thank you, sir. Just one question, I guess, since Mr. Ballard and Yates, the construction- Great, thank you, sir, uh just one question, I guess, um since um Mr. Ballard and Yates, uh the construction companies came on and I know that they had. Um the um the trade partner event, uh that the first one that they had, it was on February sixteenth. And I know that they had fourteen hundred people registered for that event and ten. Uh percent of them were uh small women in minority uh businesses, so what the purpose of that is it to? To recruit um people to help with the project, is this part of the fourteen hundred? Um temporary construction jobs that you're uh trying to achieve, or is this just to get information out? Uh to the public uh on um the project?
Oh, well, really, ma'am, it's really kind of twofold, one, get the message out, everybody fired up and excited about the project. Uh and then let them know, because we do a lot of large projects and there's occasional, you'll hear a subcontractor that's a small business say. Oh, that's three hundred million dollars, or that's a hundred million dollars, so I can't do that project, and so they'll immediately assume that. Because they're a small business, that that there's not, there's not an opportunity for them, so what we we do at these is obviously spread the message and get the word out that there is. This large of a project, but then, but then also more importantly, focus down on, hey, there is an opportunity for you, because we will. We will create opportunities for you by pairing you with a larger contractor, in the Mason example that I gave earlier. Uh small Mason working with a large Mason, so they can have the opportunity to be a part of, and that's how they. Can learn and grow, and that's how S B Ballard learned and grew, and and I think that's what we're trying to also do at that kind of event.
Great, one last question, um yes, that that did, that really did. Um the next thing I guess is, um and I know the question may have been asked about the 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 traffic study, I don't know. If the traffic study um that is, if there has been a traffic study that affects how. The ingress and the egress will happen um at the front side of the backside and plain side of the Victory Boulevard side. Uh because I know that coming off of Victory Boulevard um at rush hour, traffic time can be kind of congested. Or are there going to be some new traffic patterns that are going to be created uh for that interstate inter entrance and exit?
There, there has been a traffic study done, there are improvements that are planned for uh for all of the surrounding roads. Uh that involve in in some cases, uh some extension of of stacking lanes, changes to the sequels at different intersections. Uh I have to apologize, I don't remember all the specific details as to what's being done, but it involves uh access in and out of the site and the neighborhood. Uh we're also doing a more extensive study that takes much longer to do on the impact to the expressway itself. Uh and that'll be completed later this year.
Okay, and I guess in the final question that I have is, you know, most of this information is for. Information for the council members, I mean, there's not going to be anything that we'll have to come back to the table and vote on, because this project is already. A part of the contract um that's already set up to the lottery, um and I know that uh our citizens come to us and ask questions, so. A lot of this information is for our knowledge, so that we can be able to respond uh to some of the citizen questions that come about. Is that a a fact or, you know, um it's not going to be anything else that we're going to have to vote up or down anymore?
I, to to whom is that question addressed?
I'm not, I'm not sure, uh I I mean, I I'm thinking, you know, that some of our council members, you know, were saying, well, we want the information. And we want to be knowledgeable about it to make informed decisions, but I don't know. If there are any other uh voting decisions that we will have to make regarding any of the the steps um in this process.
You you might.
I'll defer, defer to us.
Yeah, I could, I could address that briefly, so um. Last year, the fifty six acres was rezoned to M U H. Because that's what's required on the zoning to have a entertainment district and a casino. And uh you also adopted by ordinance an entertainment district overlay. And so the, all that property was rezoned to the proper zoning and the ordinance was put in place. We filed on February nineteen a request to um put within the entertainment district that fifty six acres, that's the property owned by the E D A. That we have an option on, and we also have filed two use purposes, one for the casino and one for the hotel. So all three of those applications are at the planning staff right now. And uh once they make their suggestion or recommendation, it'll go to Planning Commission in April. Uh that's the the design and the timeline, and then that would get a recommendation and would then come before council. And you'd have two readings, and that would be the vote to approve the rezoning on the master plan. And a few separate use permits, so there are, there is an additional vote that we're looking for, council. Probably by the May timeframe, if we can keep that in schedule, I hope that's responsible.
Yes, that's that's what I was looking for, that was the, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Uh Dr. Whittaker, I think you had a question, and then then Attorney Stromberg?
Yes, um just want to make sure, did I understand um you to say, um Mr. Tobin, that um there's a five percent. Or five million dollars or more minority invest investment goal in this project?
Correct, correct.
Is is that the typical investment range for your projects?
Uh, you know, I honestly don't know that we have a typical range.
So you.
We have minority partners in in other casinos, and I'd have to get back to you on uh for an answer on that.
Okay, then my last question, I just um I heard mentioned that uh you're partnering with T C C. So the Todd Water Community College Board um has voted to partner with Rush Gaming?
No, what I said is that we've reached out to T C C. About uh working with them on on training and recruiting of their students, we don't have a a formal agreement yet with T C C.
Okay, I thought Ms. Miles said there was a partnership.
Dr. Whittaker, we're working directly with the with the the leadership there, so there's not a formal agreement, it hasn't come before board for any sort of vote or action. Uh the uh Dr. Constance, the president of T C C, uh actually she has reached out and so, and she has identified us, um her team. To work with us uh on uh workforce development, so there has not been a formal um appeal to the board, I don't think there will be if. It is the initiative of Dr. Constance and her team to um be a part of.
And and we reached out to T C C too, we we do this in in all of the communities where there is a. A a local educational institution that that is nearby or is is training people that would be. Uh good candidates for employment at our casinos.
Okay, thank you.
There's a couple examples that I got too, um, you know, for example, in Schenectady, we work closely with. Uh Schenectady Community College to develop a casino management program. Uh we work closely with C C A, the Community College here in Pittsburgh. To develop uh programs as well and as well as a dealer school, so. Um that's something that, you know, that that's sort of what we do um when we come to a community.
Okay, Dr. Whittaker, I'd like to address your question about the uh the investors, this is something we're doing voluntarily, we weren't um asked to do. And so with the uh investors, so uh we we apparently offered uh equity positions for um. Minority investors that, and you're correct, five percent or five million dollars, whichever is greater, and right now, we specifically talk to Portsmouth. Uh potential Portsmouth investors, not outside of Portsmouth yet.
No, I was just talking, I was trying to find if that's historically what has been done.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify. Attorney Stromberg?
Thank you, Mayor, uh there's been a lot of questions uh about the uh the hotel, and I thought it might be helpful to let you know what the development agreement says about the hotel. Uh there are protections for the city in that part of the development uh agreement that Mr. Tobin uh mentioned briefly. First of all, the developer has the right to begin construction of the hotel at any time, but no later. Uh than within one year after, the developer has net revenue from the casino of at least a hundred seventy five. Uh million dollars during a twelve month period, if Norfolk has a casino at that same time. Or the developer has net revenue from the casino of two hundred fifty million during two consecutive twelve month periods. If they have those revenues, they have to build a hotel within a year. Also, if the developer has not constructed a hotel within four years of operating the casino. Uh then the E D A basically takes over uh and is allowed to contract with another, becomes a ground, it's basically a ground lease. That would be uh leased out to uh another hotel, so uh there are protections for the city in the development. Not that there's any indication that Rush Street's not going to build a hotel, but like any agreement, there are protections for the city if a hotel is not built by Rush Street.
Yeah, attorney, I mean, um, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir, go ahead, Dr.
I I think we. Yeah, I think at our next work session, we should further um information and discussion on what Attorney Stromberg just brought up, because we don't have enough time. And also, I think it'd be beneficial for us to see that language in writing, and so. I don't want to try to get in a long discussion on that um this evening.
Sure, and and I think that's that's a, that's an acceptable recommendation, perhaps what we can do is. Um maybe have an extended work session time, extended man hour, and perhaps even go over the development agreement, I think that would be helpful. Let's just cover the whole development agreement, and then if there're pertinent questions to the agreement, they can be addressed at that time.
Right, all right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir, Vice Mayor Barnes.
So um I I would like, because I I don't want to answer what I've been about, but I just wanted to get a answer to my question when I asked about the um. When the whole project was going to be complete, because nobody answered that question.
Well, I I think, I think keying off what the the city attorney just uh stated. Uh that sets the the kind of the outside dates for the hotel. Uh and uh as as Delcino said earlier, our our target is to be open. Uh with the casino and all of its amenities, that's the event center, it's the restaurants, it's the the other venues. Uh in the the uh mid to late fall of twenty twenty two, uh we've we've. Uh directed our design and construction team to be prepared and able to meet that date, and the. The uncertainty in my answer tonight is simply related to the lottery board, because we we can't meet a date. Until the lottery board uh is further along with their process of issuing licenses. So we'll we'll be prepared to start this summer, if the lottery board uh enacts what they need to do to allow us to do that, we'll be under construction this summer and we can. Can meet a uh a late twenty twenty uh opening. Uh if the lottery board uh takes uh longer to approve things. Uh and we have to start later, then then the schedule would slip, but it would slip uh sort of concurrently with whatever the lottery board schedule is.
Do you still have a question, uh Vice Mayor?
No, I'm good.
And and this, this is a question for either Mr. Tubin or or our city attorney, uh Attorney Stromberg. Who is responsible for paying the licensing fee of, I believe, fifteen million dollars to the lottery board?
Clearly Rush Street, not not the city, I understand there's some rumors out there that's saying that the city uh had to pay, the city is not responsible for that fifteen million dollars.
No, no, we 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 pay the licensing fee.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions uh from from my colleagues for the Rush Street team or the Ballard team or Delcino? Or Mr. Romano, Attorney Romano? Well, gentlemen and 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 lady, I certainly on behalf of my colleagues of. Uh on the city council, I I want to thank you for a very comprehensive presentation. And one of the other things I want to take my liberty and thank you for is, when you say you invest in the communities. And you want to start off on the right foot, the support that you all have provided to our African American historical society. In addition to our children's museum and other areas and groups within our community to help them to improve the quality of life. For our citizens is appreciated, and and we we are looking forward to having you as a full time partner in our community. To help uplift our community and make it a better place to live, work and play, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of council. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Night, thank you.
Colleagues, if if we could, before we start our our regular meeting, we take a a recess before we start. Um and then we we will begin our regular meeting at seven o'clock, so that everybody can get themselves together and be prepared, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for very.
Was there a closed session? Was there a need for a closed session, I'm sorry, was there a need for a closed session, I thought I saw?
Uh uh no, uh no, there was not.
Okay, thank you.
No, ma'am, okay, I'll see everybody at seven o'clock.
All right.
Bye bye.